The value of what we have in this country and the freedom we have. So again, a moment of silence for the victims of nine eleven. Thank you. We will go ahead and get started on a very important topic. And I will turn it over to our city manager to introduce what we're going to be talking about today.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Thanks for coming this morning. This is such a crucial topic that we keep this conversation going. And so this morning I wanted to take this opportunity to do three things. We're going to hear from primary healthcare about the best practices for outreach services. And the reason for that is, you might imagine, is that this is not an area of service that the city has quite frankly, a lot of expertise on. This is something we have relied on our partners as nonprofits to be able to assist us. We need to continue that model frankly, because as administrators in my office, we had quite a bit that we needed to learn. And throughout that process, we recognized that it would be incredibly helpful to bring them to you as council members to have an opportunity to become educated on what it means to have outreach services and to be able to develop relationships with the homeless population to get them to a better place in their life with the services they may need. That is better presented, better communicated from the professionals themselves, not me. And so I've asked them to attend this morning's meeting and they graciously agreed. So thank you to primary healthcare. Two other items that we'll cover this morning is the actual changes that are being presented to the ordinances for Monday night's council meeting. You've got those in front of you and I will go through those with you after the presentation. And then I will follow up with the updates for the seven initiatives that the council agreed needed to be advanced along with the changes to the ordinances. So with those three items, I'm going to ask Shelby to come on up. She's welcome to introduce the rest of her team if she'd like, and I'll jump right into it. Thank you, Shelby.
Good morning. My name is Shelby Ridley. I'm the Director of Programs at Primary Healthcare. So I oversee all of our homeless programming as well as our HIV programming. With me today, I have our COO Nathan Simpson, as well as Jenna Shuck, who is our CI Program Manager, who would oversee the street outreach program at Primary Healthcare. So P H C has been doing street outreach for over fifteen years. The funding for that street outreach has been varied over the years. Much of that coming from, in the very beginning, SAMPA funding. Currently, it's coming through our Ryan White funding, which is actually HIV funding to ensure that we get people who are living unsheltered access to HIV and STI testing in the community. So we've had to look at very interesting ways to fund street outreach, knowing that it's a vital service at P H C. And I think that we're really trusted in the community to be able to provide those services. So our goal of this, we were asked to provide a street outreach proposal almost six months ago at this point. And we really want to be able to expand our street outreach services. P H C has one F T E at this point, and this proposal would expand to four F T Es. So really giving people who are living unsheltered increased staff availability and improving service delivery to make sure that they're getting their needs met within the community. Some of the best practices that we are providing street outreach with and really all of our homeless services are housing first. I'm sure many of you have heard those terms. It's really client choice. Everything is about client choice. We can't make anyone do anything. And we know that when clients have choice about what's next for them, they're more invested in that choice. So we don't require sobriety. We don't require appointments. We don't require income. You come as you are, whatever person that looks like, and we figure out what that means. And the thing that pairs really well with that is progressive engagement. And so it's building those relationships. We know that almost everyone experiencing homelessness has been let down by a system. So they don't trust us by nature, and we know that. So we believe that clear is kind. Don't trust, don't promise something that you can't follow through on. Don't promise something that's not there. Be clear about what you can do and be clear about what you can't do. And when you say you're going to show up at one, you show up at one, even if that person doesn't show up as well. It's really building that trust. And what we have seen is that sometimes that trust can be built in a few weeks. And sometimes it takes years. We have a gentleman that was engaging with our street outreach worker for four years before he did an intake. But he did an intake. He got housed. And not every person that does an intake will get housed. That's the reality of the system as it is. But it's that engagement. It's people trusting that we know what we're talking about. We're not making referrals to just like a wide range of community resources. We want to have right referral, right time. We want to know what those resources are. So much of our street outreach is about the relationship that we have with the community and our community partners. They're not just our clients. They're our clients in the sense of, you know, it's other providers. It's the community members who show up and want to help as well. And so we have that vision of we need to know what resources there are in the community to really make sure that we have what we need for folks. And then harm reduction. It goes again with housing first. We're not asking for sobriety. We're not asking for people to stop everything. Homelessness is trauma. It just is. And so it's not a fair ask of us for them to be sober, but we can have hard conversations about what does it look like to be more safe? So we can offer bleach kits if there's IV drug use of some sort. We can offer Sharps containers to mitigate some of that risk. If they're trading sex for safety, we can offer testing and other things. And so it's just about having hard conversations. But all of those hard conversations come with that trust. So it is, if you don't have trust with the people that you're serving, you don't have anything. And so we have to navigate that very closely and carefully to ensure that the people who are living outside really do trust us to know kind of what's happening. So the scope of services that we would provide, obviously connection to centralized intake. P H C has been the centralized intake since 2015. Street outreach services, rapport building, supply connection as we have it. P H C is not a large supplier of goods, but we have a lot of other people in the community who do provide a lot of support for that. So we do refer people to Japa and to the Supply Hive and other resources in the community. And so we try to make sure that we have what we need for folks and to make those referrals. When we have things, we'll definitely give them out, but we're not a large, we don't have a large space to store anything in. Referral to community resources. We have weird and wide knowledge. We make it our business to understand how other systems work, because those systems are really challenging. And if they're challenging for us, they're challenging for clients. And so we want to help with that system navigation. Limited transportation, and by what, literally what I mean is there is some bus passes. So you know, you're not ready to go to CI right now. We might be able to get you there later by giving you a bus pass. But we'll also have two vehicles for street outreach workers. So if you say, hey, I need to go here right now. Okay, great. Get in the car. Let's go. And that could be to shelter. It could be, hey, I can stay with my sister on the north side. That transportation is imperative to be able to get folks from one place to another when they're ready. And then just basic needs. So you know, hygiene, socks, underwear. Everybody feels better when they've had a shower, so maybe they need to come to P H C or to SIS to grab a quick shower. So we can do kind of all of those things. We can, we'll have three F T E street outreach workers paired with the existing street outreach workers. And we would have six days a week, seven to seven. And I say depending on the season. So once it's dark outside, like things look a little different in the street outreach world. And so maybe those hours change in the winter when it's dark at five. And we're changing a little bit of our tactic about how we go about street outreach. We're not a twenty-four hour or on-call service. And so we want to say that upfront, that we're not a middle of the night, you know, go out and meet people's needs in that way. We've just never been that. And so things would have to escalate in other ways if that was the case.
Before you go on, so supply connection, is that like tents or sleeping bags? Or is this food and clothing or what?
Really all of it.
How do you define supply?
So really, it's about what that person needs. If it's a tent, then we're often making that connection to Japa. As Japa is one of the larger suppliers of tent. If it's food, we have lists of food pantries that are D mark and non-D mark related, as well as meal sites around the community, knowing that, you know, folks can only use a D mark pantry once every month. And so if it's, you know, whatever the supply is, we're trying to fit that need. So it's really about asking, what is it that you need that day? P H C has a clothing closet. So if it's, you know, I need a fresh pair of pants or a pair of shoes, we try to do that. SIS also has a clothing closet.
All right. And so, and then clothing is also under basic needs?
Yeah.
Okay. And then real quickly, so the staffing, the three full-time equivalents, those are not currently in your plan. This is like how we're going to step up. Is that correct?
Yes. We currently have one person doing all of P H C's street outreach. And his grant also requires that he does HIV and STI testing throughout the week. So this would increase our ability to be out and about, because we would be adding three street outreach workers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. The connection to centralized intake is really imperative. Just to hit on that, you know, we want people to have that assessment, but there is a waiting list. And so, you know, to be, to be clear, that connection to centralized intake could result in mainstream benefits. So, you know, applying for SNAP. It could result in a shower, other community resources. But it is likely also meaning that they're entering a housing waiting list. That waiting list currently has at least seven hundred and fifty people on that waiting list. So housing is not instantaneous from centralized intake. But it is a good indicator of how many people are still waiting for housing in our community. And so we want to make sure that the most vulnerable people are on that waiting list so that we can get them connected to housing when there is an opening. The other thing about that relationship is that when there is an opening in housing, when there is a permanent supportive housing opening, we only have like three days to find somebody. So if you can't find somebody in that three days, that opening moves along. And so we really need to have that connection so that we can find that person in that moment. And we can know, okay, this person is ten, you know, tends to be in this area. Trying to work with other street outreach workers as well, so that we don't have anybody miss out on openings.
You said there was a seven hundred, approximately seven hundred person waiting list for housing?
Yes.
And that, that's specifically permanent supportive housing?
It's, it's a totality of waiting lists. So permanent supportive housing would require chronically homeless status. So it would be a smaller number than that, but we far exceed the waiting list. And we have openings for permanent supportive housing, because the openings are very rare. People either fail out, which doesn't happen very often. Anowom has a ninety-five percent retention rate, or they die. And so there's not a lot of openings in P S H.
And what are some of the other housing services and the waitlist there?
Sure. So P H C has a variety of rapid rehousing programs within its agency. And we take folks from the centralized intake waiting list. So we serve veterans, families, and singles. There are several other rapid rehousing programs within the community as well. So Iowa Home Youth Centers has one for youth. There are several housing programs that take referrals from us that are not required to, but do in best practice. But overall, only fifteen percent of people who come to centralized intake are referred to a housing resource, because the programming funding doesn't grow from year to year typically.
Right. So someone could be ready to be housed, but there isn't the housing to get them into housing?
Yes. Yeah, we don't have the program openings to get them into the housing. Additionally, one of the things that has really changed, I would say, post pandemic is the number of actual units that we are able to find within the community. We're short on one, two, and three bedroom units within the community that kind of meet that affordable guideline. For most of HUD housing, we have to prove affordability in a variety of ways. And so that makes it very challenging. A lot of the tenant screening criteria has increased post pandemic as well, which has made it increasingly challenging to house folks. And so the housing times, even for folks in programs, have increased.
Seven hundred and fifty that you said that are waiting, are those families? Are they two people, three people? What's the, what's the makeup of the unit that, that needs housing? Two, two people, singles?
I would say the vast majority are singles. We do have a growing family population. We have over a hundred families on the family shelter waiting list at any given time. That's increased. Mid pandemic, we were quite low, but we've had a growing number of unsheltered families as well, which is really concerning, because that means that we have kids living outside. We have a really good partnership with Polk County Community Family Youth Services to mitigate that on the short term. But we also don't have enough shelter to be able to rotate people and families through. So I would say it's less than twenty-five percent of that waiting list that is families. And I could get you specific numbers after the meeting. But I would say the vast majority on the waiting list are singles or couples with no children. Some of the outcomes that we have looked at is, you know, I think the immediate outcome is somebody for businesses to call if they're worried about somebody experiencing homelessness or kind of what is that response? Right now, we don't have enough staff to meet that response. So I do get calls from folks and they're like, so-and-so is waving cardboard and I'm worried about it. Or, you know, I've seen this person. And we have one person right now to meet all of those needs. And so we would be able to engage at a higher level. Engaging people living in their urban core, so a lot of the folks downtown that are living unsheltered and a lot of instances, living without tents. And so as we get into cold months, trying to figure out kind of what that means for folks to get resources and then providing connections to community resources. So, you know, all of these things are important. We have to know who's living outside to know how to help. But at the end of the day, housing is the one true solution to people experiencing homelessness. Our goals for collaboration are, we want to be a good community partner. I think we're seen as a good community partner at this point. And we know that it's not just primary healthcare who is engaging with folks. So mobile crisis and cares, how can we expand that partnership so that maybe we can be involved in some of that response? Operation Downtown, the Des Moines Fire Department, the Mobile Integrated Health, we spoke with them last week. We're serving the same humans. Very often, we're serving the same humans. And so how is it that we can have better partnership, regular meetings, to better understand how we could be serving people and what gaps that we could be filling? To some extent, the Des Moines Police Department, you know, they go out and work with people experiencing homelessness. We don't share information, but we certainly could hear information about, you know, how could we be connecting with people maybe before they connect with people? And then other street outreach providers. We know that we're not going to be the only street outreach provider. Four people for this entire city is, is not enough. So making sure that we're still involved in the by-name list meetings and daily communication about, you know, the connections that we have. We're all entering into the same homeless management information system if, if you're receiving HUD funding. And we find that to be a best practice. So if someone from another agency has gone out, we can check that and say like, oh, I see that you met with them yesterday and you did a SNAP application. I'm not going to do another SNAP application. So really decreasing that rework for all of us.
So, so as we go forward here, and maybe this is a question for you. You talk about, you know, collaborate with the police, but you're going to be the first, as we get complaints, I believe, and Scott, you can answer this, you'll be the first person to have contact with anyone we get complaints.
I think that's how it's going to work.
Yeah.
But I just want to clarify for the people watching and the people here.
Yeah. So one of the things that I wanted to be clear about is kind of what is our scope? So we're not camp enforcement.
Right.
We don't go out with neighborhood inspections. We don't go out with the police. Everything that we've talked about is based on relationship. That's not, that's not a part of it. So what we've talked about is having kind of like an overall team email. Those concerns can come to us and we can try and be that first connection. Again, we can say like, this is what we think might happen. Everyone has their own right to make decisions for themselves, and so they can stay, they can go. We can offer resources in that moment. They can make the decision to go to shelter. They may make the decision to move or to not move. But we don't, we can't have that direct alignment for our street outreach purposes, and it doesn't do better things for clients. So we will get those notifications from like neighborhood inspections ahead of time, but we don't directly partner. I do envision to a communication of like, hey, I went to that camp. Maybe I need forty-eight more hours. And that's a conversation that's been happening for years, actually, with neighborhood inspections. Chris Helskov would, you know, send an email out, hey, you have ten days. And if that person really had a plan, I could say, I just need ten more days. And that, you know, that conversation has already been happening. And so that's how I picture that conversation happening.
Yeah. So there are going to be collaboration between you, neighborhood inspection, police. Everyone's going to collaborate now.
Yes.
At work and going forward to, to make sure that we get these folks into the best services and provide them whatever we can provide them, correct?
Yeah, we're just not going to be, we're conversing. We're not like going out together when we're doing things. Yes.
Perfect.
And you'll have more people to make that first call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
They will go out in pairs, just because that's best practice from a safety perspective. So I envision a morning shift and kind of that evening shift with some overlap.
Sure.
We just want to make sure that, you know, we have that kind of best practice. And then, you know, I have, I think it's a fair conversation to say that street outreach is a necessary thing for this community, but you won't see less people experiencing homelessness until we have an increase in housing. That is really the only thing that is going to do that. And so, you know, as a provider, I just feel like when I say clear is kind to clients, clear is kind to you, that we want to make sure that people have connections and that they have their needs met as much as we, as we can. But some of that really basic need is housing. And so, you know, increasing services is, is absolutely needed. But the, the housing piece of it is the end goal for us.
And Scott, going forward, I don't know if you want to touch on this now or touch on it as we go forward. We are working on other goals for housing. And there is other things that we're trying to do as, as going forward along with this ordinance, correct?
Yes. And we could actually have a whole separate workshop just on that alone, because we, we treat housing needs on a continuum as well, with all price points, with all types and varieties of housing types. And, and so, yeah, we, we've mentioned before that with every apartment development, we're, we're adding affordability units into those with incentives from the city. We're heavily involved with the housing, department, housing agency, with the vouchers and whatnot, and working with landlords to expand available units. But we're working against the tide there. In that case, Shelby's exactly right, is that we will have to come forward to, to counsel with, with more incentives, if you will, or at least process changes to incentivize more landlords to allow for vouchers.
But we're looking at, you know, particularly sites for a pallet, pallet village of some sort. We're looking at maybe a larger, you know, a larger place that can house a lot more people. I know that that's, there's nothing definite, but we are looking at those things right now. And I think it's, it's good that everyone knows that. We understand that, and we're going to continue to work, work towards that goal.
Yeah, that's a great point, because it's, it's not just bringing people together, which is our primary role, is to facilitate these conversations. And the mayor and I have done that no less than a dozen times in the past couple of weeks. But it's also finding some funding as well, whether that's through pass-through funding or TIF incentives, things, home funding, things of those nature. So it's a two-pronged attack there. It's bringing the right people together to grow the final solution here, which is more housing with the necessary services that, that those individuals and families may need. But it is also process. We're learning a lot. I'm going to call out Amber and Chris and Lisa Krabs are doing great work at deciphering the federal rules for which we, we receive funds in how we can streamline and broaden the opportunities with using more and better federal funds to address housing as well. So again, literally, and we can, we can, and will do this, bring forward the other efforts that we are putting on the back end, if you will, which is the preventative side of, of having more housing. Part of those conversations with the mayor and others is to expand that to our suburban friends. And the county is right there lockstep with us and always has been. But we do need more community partners from a local government standpoint. We are only thirty-six percent of the population of the metro area. We have very typical six hundred thousand populated issues with, with housing. However, that will never be solved if we are the only ones putting effort and actual incentives into those. So we've, we've made some progress in that regard. The H C C is going to be a huge, will play a huge role in assisting with that. And we have homework and dozens of partners and the providers.
Thank you. I'd love to have more of a conversation on the housing piece. But, but this raises a couple of questions. I mean, I wanted, since we, we only have primary healthcare here for a limited time, I think there's some housing questions that that raises. One, you know, we talk about what we're doing from a development perspective. And, and I think it's a good step that we're getting ten percent of units. Most of that's at eighty percent AMI. I guess my question is, from a primary healthcare and centralized intake, are those units that we're building accessible to, to folks you're, you're talking about?
They're not. The vast majority of people that we're working with are under thirty percent of their area median income. So for a single person, that's under eighteen thousand dollars. SSI is nine hundred and forty-three dollars a month. And the new fair market rent for FY25 came out and it's nine hundred dollars. So it might be a little bit more than that, but it's, it's not a sustainable option. When we talk about affordable units that you're incentivizing, I would really encourage you to look at units under fifty percent, under thirty percent. And I know that's hard. The funding stack on that is, is incredibly challenging. And that's why, that's why folks don't do it. But even if we had a few units in every building, one of the things that Anowom says is housing should be autonomous and anonymous. that Anna Wim says is housing should be autonomous and anonymous. Um, and so if we had a few units in every building that we had, um, accessible for us, you know, we can find people who meet criteria for that, but we have to have landlords who work with us. Um, and even the number of landlords have changed because we had small landlords prior to the pandemic that were working, um, with us. And a lot of those small landlords either decided, I'm gonna sell my unit. It's not worth the hassle. Or they started working with large property management firms and those folks have increased their tenant selection criteria to basically price us out or, um, you know, three times the income, credit over 600. Like that's not, those aren't the folks that we're working with unfortunately. And so we find it even more challenging to find units, um, within the metro.
Counselor.
I was just gonna say that we're meeting today too with a MAC group that we've pulled together to discuss it throughout the whole metro area. Cause as before, and we're also looking, a lot of the people still need supportive services within the housing. So it's just not housing first. It's making sure you have the proper housing with the support that many of them need coming out of homelessness. So we are working on that. Uh, we hopefully will have some answers shortly on what we can do to increase that. But again, it, it's all inclusive on all the things that need to happen because this has been going on for, this didn't just start. And when you're at the level that that is, it's very hard to build anything. So it's how do you stack it? How do you invest in new housing?
If, if I could, to your point, Councilman, that again, it is a spectrum of housing needs as well. So when we are incentivizing, incentivizing 80% AMI units, that is helpful in this regard as well because there are people, uh, that are, are living in, uh, in units that, that they can afford more, but they can't find units. And so you might have some that are already in a permanent supportive housing or another housing program that could move up into these new units that we're building and make room for individuals that are coming, uh, unsheltered.
But I, I, I would agree with that. But, I mean, when we sit up here, particularly during this discussion, we've touted how we build housing and what, what we're doing there. And one of the things that has troubled me, and I've supported these projects because they are good projects, but our development policies have taken more affordable units off than we are putting back on. It, it's things like, for, for example, um, you know, we're converting what had been an old hotel and it'd been very affordable, maybe even substandard housing. But those housing units went away because we're redeveloping that as a hotel. Or for example, we've developed, redeveloped old units and some of these units that we're talking about in that 80% are in buildings that everything was at three, $400 rent rolls, but the building was deteriorating and it was redeveloped. And now it's $600, $700, still affordable, but less affordable than it was. That's part of what is in, what is in those numbers. And that's not even including, for example, Invest ESM, which is positive, but, you know, Invest ESM just bought 10 houses by Drake that are all split up, right? And there are tenants living in those and looking at converting those to single family. So everything that we tout, we're not keeping up from a supply perspective. Like, and, and we're, we're touting some of the things we're doing on the affordability side in, in a vacuum or in a silo. And we need, like, those are good things, but it's, it has not been the emphasis of our housing policy and our housing has, has actually, I think, been contributing more to that shortage than it has been doing to maintain parity on, on affordable units.
So what about the ION program where we are helping low income owners?
The ION pro, like, every single one of these things is good. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, Invest ESM is bad. I have supported Invest ESM. I've supported every single one of those projects that I listed, but I still have concern that we are, in our redevelopment efforts, we are losing affordability. And our efforts on the other side to bring new affordability online is not keeping up, not with what the metro needs as a whole, but what our own redevelopment efforts are taking off the market, uh, on a going forward basis. So we're falling further behind. If you look at our efforts as a totality, just the city of Des Moines, uh, we are falling further behind because our focus has been more on redevelopment, which that needs to be a part of the focus too. But we have lost, we have lost affordable units in our community and we are not, the things that we are talking about here are not doing anything to keep up with that.
Scott, if I may, to this point, I think it would be helpful in the future if rather than using the term affordable, that we add an adjective to that and discuss the AMI. It's a 30%, 40%, 50%. We should get into the habit of using those percentages because it more accurately defines what level of income a particular project or a quantity of units.
Yeah, that's a great, great advice. And in fact, I think we want to make sure it's also consistent with like, uh, Polk County Housing Trust, uh, definitions, uh, because they do have the inventory, uh, that they've reported out about the different categories. Zero to 30% AMI is extremely, um, affordable. And then, uh, 30 to 60%, 60 to 80, 80. So I think, I think that's a great idea. Um, but we'll also want to make sure that it's consistent across the industry.
And as part of a comprehensive look, I think it would be helpful annually to publish a matrix. We have the information of how many units in each of those AMI categories or definitions that we have. And I would also be interested in seeing how many are coming off. It's my understanding that if, if a developer gets a financial incentive, they're required to provide these affordable, whatever category they are, units.
Sure.
But, but after a certain period of time, that requirement drops and they can go to market rate. And I think one of the conversations we should also be having is if we're giving a financial incentive, say for 10 years, there should be a requirement that the financial, that the affordability component is beyond that 10 years. Um, the building's probably paid for at that time. Rents are higher. Uh, we need to be, to me, we need to be asking more.
And that's, that's the impetus for creating the, the land trust, uh, so that we can, we can actually, um, have housing units that are forever, uh, for affordability at those lower AMIs as well. So we're attacking it in the continuum at that level as well.
I mean, I, I saw some other questions for Shelby.
Okay.
Um, so what, one of the things you talked about, some of the barriers to, to housing and, and to landlords and, um, one of the things that I, I suggested, I think at a either previous workshop or meeting was a, a fund to, and, and I didn't have necessarily a structure, but a fund to help, help, help with landlords. And, and I, I was wondering if you, from your vantage point, uh, and the vantage point of the clients that you deal with, is that something that would be helpful? And if so, what would it look like? What would, what should we be considering to try and help bridge a barrier like that?
So there's a few options. Um, there's, there's a deposit assistance, which is, you know, very challenging if your rent is 900 and your deposit is equal to that, um, coming up with 1800. But also if you're a more challenging client, you might have a double deposit. And so then you're looking at coming up with, you know, over $2,000 in that. So PHC has a fund with Polk County Housing Trust Fund, but that money has decreased over the last year. Um, we also have a landlord mitigation fund. So if you are housed, something goes awry, um, and there are damages to the unit, that the landlord can request that, but it's a small fund. And so we can't use that as a, um, upfront kind of incentive. And then, um, on a national level, the Support Services for Veterans and Families Program, um, as well as I think the Emergency Housing Vouchers have done a landlord incentive. So there's up to a thousand dollars that you can give to the landlord. We don't ask what is happening with it. You don't have to give it back to us. Um, but it is an incentive to take our clients. Um, it's not been, uh, increasingly used. Landlords are very wary of that right now. Um, and that's one program. So SSBF is only for veterans. Emergency housing vouchers, we've used almost all of them in the community and won't have more. So, um, but it would take a substantial amount of money because we want to be consistent in the messaging to landlords that that's something that would be helpful.
Yeah. You, you mentioned double deposit. So why, why do folks end up getting charged a double deposit?
I would say, um, previous evictions, uh, increased criminal background, low credit, low income, all of those things the landlord is, is saying are reasons to charge a double deposit. And so they're trying to mitigate their risk on the backend should they not get rent, um, and have to file. And so, um, they're charging that double.
So you said, yeah, so a, a number of things. One of them was criminal conviction. Would that be even like a simple misdemeanor?
Every, every landlord is different, but it could be anything from a public intox to a trespass to anything up to and including a felony.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, let's let it go ahead. She's got more to go. You got, let's go ahead and let you finish.
Okay. Um, we, we already really covered the proposed process that the team would have, uh, an email that concerns after hours would elevate to appropriate departments. So, um, you know, if there was an emergency, that would
Be the care team.
Yeah, it would be the cares team. Um, and then two-way communication with neighborhood development. And then finally, just the two-year budget that was proposed, um, that covers the FTE, vehicle costs, um, some office supplies and technology, and then client supplies.
And this has been covered. The budget has been, we will have in place. We have secured the funding. Let the council know.
And that'll be on the 16th, uh, contract on the 16th, on the council meeting.
There'll be authorization on Monday and I'll cover it briefly, uh, in just a second.
Okay. Is that right? I have a question on, on the, I think, go ahead. Counsel member, go ahead.
Shelby, I'm, I'm thankful we have people in the community that want to do what you do and your outreach workers, just for our sake and the communities. What, tell, tell us like how you, how you find the right people to do this and what you're looking for and what's the magic of, of their, of their success? Cause I really appreciate all that you've done and, and this program will do.
Um, so we hire hard. Um, it's not the first person that walks into the door. It's the person who has the mission fit for PHC and understanding that we all are humans and that we're more than the worst thing that we've ever done. And, um, and so our interview questions reflect that. I think also the reputation that we have in the community is like, we have a lot of people who are currently on our team that came from other organizations in the community, um, who wanted to work for us. And so, um, you know, hopefully the applicant pool looks good. And we also understand that people come to us with a, a variety of backgrounds. And so we have people with lived experience on our staff. We have people who, um, the experience maybe isn't exactly what you would think it would be. But if you can work in a bar, you can triage people who are intoxicated really well. Um, you know, there's a wide variety of experience. And so we really, we try to be expansive in who we're hiring.
Thank you.
I had a question on, on budget. Um, so I, and I don't know how this process worked. Um, but did we come to you with a budget amount or did we ask for a budget for, because I thought in the directive, we had been asking for four additional outreach workers. And now today, this is the first time I've heard instead of four additional, it's three additional to get to four total, which is a slight shift.
So I, I provided this prior to, um, any of that. So this initial proposal was requested, I believe at the end of March, and I was, I provided it in April. So at that point, we, I didn't have a number. Um, I had a kind of a range that, that we should be looking at. And so I provided it based on that.
The, uh, council approval, uh, with the ordinance and initiatives in the first two readings indicated that we would put four outreach out there. It did not indicate that it had to be new. So we, we've worked with their one existing to add three.
Okay. I guess, I guess my intent was for, for additional and the question, I mean, that was the conversation we had in the second, the second meeting. Part of why I asked and my hope is that we talked about four additional, uh, and one of the things I suggested was, well, maybe if we're hearing that there's a need for other dollars, for example, like a, a landlord fund, a double deposit, deposit fund, something along those lines, that we bump down to three and use the difference to seed a, a, a fund like that. Um, and to me, it, this feels like, and maybe it wasn't clear, but I thought it was four additional. Um, so my hope is that there's room to consider an idea like that since there's clearly a need
Sure.
Uh, to, to make housing work for more folks.
Don't they work in pairs though?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'd caution about going down, uh, from the four that we've gonna, we have identified three new and, and theirs. Cause, uh, that was one of the things we learned is that it's important to have them in pairs. And so I, I guess I would not, uh, entertain the thought of potentially lowering that. We want to give this a, a fair shake, uh, with, with the four that will be active. Um, and, and I'll get into this more, but they're gonna be responsive and, and the priority will be in the downtown area. But they are available to go out beyond the downtown area.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting lowering. In, in my mind, the proposal in front of us is lower than what I was expecting to see. And so my, my hope is to, to use, to find some dollars to, to supplement those efforts to help house more folks.
The dollars were the total dollars anyway. So this is what we could get for the total dollars that we could find. So it's still three more for sure and four under this comprehensive plan. So I believe we're still doing, that doesn't mean we'll stop there, but let's start to see what this gets done and helps us with, which is much greater than what we had. So I appreciate the effort and I know that there's other outreach workers too within the system and having a better coordinated system, I think will enhance all of it. So does anyone else have any other questions? If not, we'll move on.
Mayor, this has been very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you.
Understand this? I, so the money, I, I mean, I want to understand where the money is. And is this a one-year commitment? Is it a two-year commitment? Is it an ongoing commitment?
That's actually part of my presentation.
So let's get into the presentation.
Laura, I think I'm gonna attempt to change slides from up here.
Okay.
As she's putting that on our screens, uh, again, I want to, uh, send a thanks out to the incredible team that we have here at the city and then our nonprofits in, in assisting and putting this together because the seven initiatives that you're gonna hear me talk about are not initiatives that we could ever fulfill, uh, with just city staff and expertise. It absolutely takes a community to, to address this and we'll continue to need that throughout. And so everything, everyone from our legal department in helping us draft the final documents that you have in front of you for the ordinances, uh, to our, uh, obviously, uh, Amber, uh, dealing with policy issues, uh, helping us with our relationships in the community to bring the right people to the table. Um, Malcolm and Chris, Lisa Krabs on the funding side. And I know I'm probably missing others, but definitely the communications team. We're gonna rely on them pretty heavily as we move forward because this cannot stop. I think we all agree, uh, the, the efforts only need to increase. Uh, the spectrum has many gaps. The continuum has many gaps that have been identified. And so I appreciate that with these ordinance changes in these first, and I'm gonna call them first, seven initiatives. Um, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, uh, but it is gonna be continuous work. And so again, uh, finding additional resources, additional And so again, finding additional resources, additional partners is so crucial to the success of this. So with that, thank you, Laura. It does work. Awesome. So again, there are three items to cover. Thank you, Shelby, for the presentation. The remaining two items are to go through the ordinance changes and then the seven initiatives. The first ordinance, and I didn't even put a slide together for this, is simply changing the encampment cleanup ordinances, ordinance that we have, from a 10-day notice to a three-day notice. That has not gotten a lot of discussion, but that was a more simple change there. The more dramatic changes are to the prohibition with camping and sleeping. And so you have the ordinances in front of you. And I'm going to go through what those actual changes are. They're both included on there, I believe, if we've printed it right. Yeah, both the camping and the sleeping are included in the same. So we're dealing with a couple of different sections. I think it's easiest to go through those documents in that fashion. 407 is the area that discusses the sleeping prohibition. You'll see that with what will be presented on Monday now removes the sleeping prohibition from the public right of ways. So it really focuses on prohibiting the sleeping on sidewalks, streets, driveways and alleys, all of which have a very real safety aspect to them. So we thought it made most sense to focus on those unsafe areas for individual sleeping. Just a reminder, and I'll probably say this a couple more times, when we come across individuals that are prohibited from like the sleeping on the sidewalks, our outreach will be the first individuals to speak with them as well, because again, they may have a relationship with those individuals already. So the intent here again is to utilize our new relationship with our outreach workers to address even the sleeping aspects. A couple other changes on the fines and how that gets handled. You're going to see that we have put in an exclusion for minors. We don't believe that it would have been applicable anyway, but we thought it was good to just come out and say that the fines are being excluded for minors on both the sleeping and the camping prohibition. The fine itself has been lowered from $50 to 15. And there is language that we have added to be as clear as possible that the intent of this ordinance is to get compliance, to get to the heart of what we're trying to do here is to get individuals into safer environments, whether that's shelter or permanent housing is the preference. So those are the changes on the ordinance. You'll notice that there are not actually that many. So the seven initiatives.
Scott, I don't know if now is the time to talk about the, I have questions about the ordinance itself. We can wait, and I can do this at the end.
Why don't we go through and see, let's get through the.
It won't take me long.
Yeah, let's get through the initiatives.
And we're doing not too bad on time, although I know several of us do have a nine o'clock, so we've still got quite a bit of time here. I'll go through this quickly. The seven initiatives start out with the big one up front is, and this is continuous, ongoing, is for the city to work with our shelter operators to reduce barriers. We've heard about barriers in the past and some of which are part of the initiatives. But I want to thank again all our providers. We have had multiple meetings with the providers that are currently in this world, the shelter operators. You see them listed here. They have identified some of the same barriers that we had already started working on with transportation, animals, pets, and quite a bit more. So we are continuing to work to identify where those gaps exist, some of which is actually helping to find mental health providers to put them in contact with and substance abuse. So this again is an ongoing one. We think we've made good progress, but quite frankly, part of this is bringing the group together on a regular basis.
And how often is that going to be?
I'm sorry. And how will those groups come together? Because I think we have all these silos out here. I know that Homeward doesn't necessarily, or whatever the group is, doesn't work with, if they're not HUD providers.
Yes.
So how are we bringing all of these people together? Because there are people out there doing remarkable work that are not included in some of your meetings.
Yeah, a great question, because we're trying new things to bring people together. So understand this group and the first initiative is focused on the barriers to getting people into shelter and safe housing. So that's a smaller niche than what some of the other groups are working on. We do not want to step on the toes of HCC and what Homeward is doing. And so there will need to be constant communication and coordination with their efforts so that we aren't asking the same people to come to multiple different meetings, right? So we're going to take some of our guidance from Homeward and HCC on what they're working on and then make sure that, make sure that the group that we have been talking with, with the shelters themselves are focused on the barrier aspects of why people are not coming in. Does that make sense? Because this is just one niche.
It kind of makes sense, but when I'm out, I hear people say, you know, we're not included in HCC. We're not included in some of these conversations. We have churches that are working on outreach. We have, you know, the bicycle ministry. We've got.
We are meeting with those individuals.
We've had like two or three meetings, and Amber's led some of those.
Okay, but we don't know that. That's why I'm asking that. Because we don't know that.
Yes. And so those are, as recently as two days ago, have met with the church groups that have expressed interests. And that's many meetings that we're going to need to have yet. So if you have groups or individuals that want to get involved, absolutely let myself, Amber, or Malcolm know. We will connect them in because we'll be able to contact Homeward and ask the question of how best with their, whatever services, whatever interest they may have, where best to apply those resources. Because we do not want this group that's focused on the barriers in any way to be the group that's handling all of homeless issues. It's such a wide spectrum. We need to rely on our HCC, which has elected officials to do a lot of that work.
So Scott, do you have an idea how often this group is going to meet? You're just going to meet.
As needed at this point.
But not like a regular monthly meeting or quarterly meeting or.
I'm going to look over to see.
Still evolving, I guess?
It's absolutely still evolving. And understand that it's, again, it's going to need to continuously. There is no, we've won, we're done, right? There's going to be new barriers. I would anticipate new barriers. Never would have thought the pandemic, right? And so we have to be prepared to build the, the key here is to build those relationships so that as new barriers occur, we can quickly adjust and adapt. The second item is with animal services. We do know that part of the population have animals. That makes a lot of sense. And so I personally talked with Tom Colvin over at ARL. Other staff have made additional inroads, if you will. They will provide the immediate care for these animals. Now, the cautionary note is we need to see how many will take advantage of that. And so this will be one of those items that I will report back to you after implemented how many animals are coming to the shelter. These will be identified animals with our clients and our work with outreach for individuals that are entering shelters and housing. Okay, so this is not, again, we've got to be clear what we are and what we are not. This is not an opportunity for unsheltered individuals to leave their animals there and stay unsheltered. This is removing the barrier as they decide that they are going to enter sheltering and have an animal that needs care, and ARL is stepping forward to assist in that.
I have just a general question on this. So this came out of, and I think it's positive that we're doing this. This is one of the recommendations that came out of the unsheltered study that Drake conducted, and it came directly from talking with people who are living on the streets in our community. So it's positive that it's responding in that way. Did we look, or were there any sort of best practices in terms of programs like this that we use to model our program? Or how is this, is it just an agreement and we're going to see, okay, it's an option now? Maybe people will take advantage of it. I mean, I feel like there needs to be structure to things like this or just, I mean, you're going to come back in six months and say, no one used it.
Well, okay, so you asked really a couple of questions there, right? We looked at other models, and there is the opportunity potentially to use a fostering model where maybe individual households in our community are volunteering to take an animal on a temporary basis. But in talking to ARL, we believe to start out with a very structured, as you mentioned, program where the shelters will know that when individuals are coming in, but they mentioned they have an animal that needs a care, that ARL will then be able to identify that is a situation where this animal is associated with an individual in a shelter and not their usual clientele, so to speak. So they'll be able to, they'll be tracking that. Yeah, so that, it's actually, this is one of them that fell in place quite nicely. I feel very confident that this is a good start. The second question you had, though, I caught was, we're going to need input from our outreach and other providers as well if this program's not good enough or why not? Because we may have to learn that there's a different barrier within this one. But at this point, we feel pretty confident this is a good start. So the third item is securing storage, and there's two aspects to this item. We have been able to put together a process for when we clean up encampments that the items that are saved and stored have one site. This is a collaboration between many departments. Neighborhood Services is identified as the point department, if you will, that will handle the communications and the processing. However, the storage, the cleanup itself remains with Public Works, and the storage will also be at Public Works. But what we want is the individuals to have the opportunity to talk with Neighborhood Services to retrieve any belongings that they may want to retrieve, understanding that that is intended to be a one-time opportunity to go get the things that they want to get from an encampment. So obviously that means they will be labeled as location and dates that the cleanup occurred. And that is the first aspect of the storage. The second aspect that was brought up in our previous readings at the council meetings was how to handle storage for those individuals that are about to enter or are considering entering shelter. And so that is a different barrier, that is a different concern. And so we have, in those conversations with our local shelters, identified a couple pre-made storage units that we're going to test at a couple proximities near the existing shelters. And this is another one where we're going to see how much utilization occurs, making sure that they aren't damaged, the security is proper, everything from lighting to how access is gained, whether that's, you know, the traditional padlock to key codes to biometrics, because the technology exists. So we already have a couple locations identified that we're going to start with and continue to work with our shelters for adding these potentially further away from the proximity of the shelters if that's necessary as well.
That would give them access more often.
Yeah, these are meant to be multiple access so that they can leave some things and come back to those, which is a very different need than the first solution.
And I assume you'll give us reports every 30 days. How is this working? You know, are we overwhelmed? Is it being underutilized? What's happening with some of these things? And how do we improve it? Things like that.
Absolutely.
I assume every month that the council would get a report, correct?
So we've talked about monthly reports. There will definitely be a need for monthly reports on many of these elements.
Okay.
So yeah. Some of it may be quarterly, but like this one would be monthly.
Yeah, right. Okay.
The next item, number four, is the, excuse me, transportation, another simpler one. You heard Shelby mention that that is part of the outreach service, part of the budget. It includes a couple of vehicles, so they will have the ability to transport. This is, makes a lot of sense because we saw that as a barrier that kept coming up over and over again. So this is a huge need that's being taken care of. Number five is the restrooms out in the public. So we have a couple that have already been delivered. It's just a few days ago and installed. We know that that's not going to be sufficient, so we want to see how these get utilized and continue to add to them. And then for those that do get utilized, we can actually switch the model, if you will, of the temporary restrooms to something more permanent. There are some options that are out there. The Portland Lou is one that we've talked about that would be really good, but you don't want to put those in a place that hasn't been tested yet that would get utilized and take care of whatever other issues, access, lighting, things of that nature.
Scott, just a quick question on that. Clean service, if you find that it needs to wrap up to more than a weekly cleaning, are we prepared to do that?
Yeah, so we are. And we've got the rates that that would cost as well. And so that's through Waste Solutions. We're prepared to upgrade that if necessary.
And these are not winter shelter.
Correct.
Correct. How are we going to monitor that?
So we have asked our, in the downtown, these are in the downtown area, we have asked our partners with Clean, Safe, Beautiful to check in on them as well. They're not responsible for cleaning, but they are asked to check in on.
That no one is setting up their, yeah, got it.
Yes.
Got it.
So number six is the outreach, which I think we covered pretty well. Again, worth mentioning once more that with this contract, our outreach workers are intended to be the first contact as we receive complaints that need to be addressed. So this is a great addition that's much needed.
And that's different, you might want to say, our current process of what happens now, how this is going to be different than that.
Sure. And, well, and so we don't have the same tools currently, right? So really, the focus has been in the past on the encampments and the cleanup of those encampments. With these changes to the ordinance, we are leaning forward on trying to get more people into shelter, into safer arrangements. That is how we got to the prohibition of the camping and the sleeping.
But we don't typically go out and talk or anything. We just go out, put a sign up, post it for 10 days, and then if they're not gone in 10 days, Public Works makes an opportunity to come in and just clean everything up. That's. That's, that's what.
Yep, that's the basics, but you heard that there's, there's ongoing conversations with providers as well.
Right.
To notify them, and that will even strengthen with this, with this process.
Okay.
And again, the, the police would be the last resort if we're not getting compliance.
Scott, just to review, the last resort at day, that day two, okay, all right.
And again, that's, that's also flexible. And so we'll learn how maybe adding a day or two could be very helpful if the outreach input that we receive is more promising to give that time.
And, and so is Public Works prepared to, I guess, to be more responsive? Previously, when it was a 10-day notice, and then it, it may go longer than 10 days because they have to?
Schedule, yeah.
Schedule, right.
No, so this, this is intended for them to address any locations that have been identified more immediately, within 24 hours of, of the notice being provided.
Okay.
Which again, is the second and possibly third step of the process.
I, I had asked questions, and you said you were going to address this, about funding, who's providing the funding? Is it a commitment that is more than one year? What is?
Sorry, yes.
What is the commitment level? What, what can we expect going forward?
So the, the contract that I would expect you to have on Monday's agenda is with Primary Healthcare for roughly $300,000, that provided, she gave some of the details there in the budget, that, and then we have private funding identified for roughly $250,000 of that, and we are looking at a two-year period to, to test this, knowing that quite well, that we will need to continue it beyond, but we want to see how this works with a two-year proof of.
So what is the, what is the private funding? And is it annual, like?
So we're going to have that for Monday. I don't want to steal the thunder of, of our partners that are, are willing to step up and, and donate that, so we'll have a release on Monday with, with those details, if that's all right? So outreach, did I miss anything else on the, on the outreach?
Nothing.
The seventh one is hiring an officer for any appeals that occur. That was actually the main reason why there were delays beyond 10 days, because it oftentimes had to wait till there was an opportunity to get an appeal heard and, and taken care of. And so what we found is that we needed a new system, and so we have a new job description with, with the hearing officers. These would be part-time positions as needed, we would, but we would schedule certain days of the week as needed, so we, if the volume goes up, we would, we would put more time available. We want to get these taken care of quickly, and I think this is the way to, to do that with, with at least.
Give me, or maybe someone else could give an example of, of what reasons someone would appeal their?
So we saw the.
Removal, yeah.
Yeah, so we saw the appeals in the past about maybe somebody leaving an encampment, and it was a cleanup of an encampment, and they would come back not realizing that the notice was already five or six days into it, and that they needed more time. So most of the appeals in the past have been about the things, the items to be recovered, and that they need to get those back.
Oh, so, so with a 10-day notice, if they arrived at day five, they didn't know that five days had already gone by, and?
Correct.
They weren't prepared to?
To gather.
To move, so shortening the time period, there should be fewer examples of that.
Right, and.
One would think.
And we're leaning forward on the storage aspect as well. So that's the last item there. We'll have hearing officers, I think that recruitment is on the street either Friday or Monday, so that, that will work very quickly. And it doesn't stop us from moving forward, it just adds resources to make it quicker.
And is that someone, that hearing officer, what qualifications are you looking for? Or, I mean, is this, is this sort of like an administrative law judge, or?
Councilmember Boss, yes, you are on the right path. Those are folks who have ideally some legal background, but they will be able to have administrative kind of a hearing approach to it. So like an administrative law judge, yes.
Okay. Monday, we will be ready for your order.
If I could just, just. Okay, I think, I think this is a really good start. I'm, I'm, you know, all the work that's gone into this, but my concern is always on the safety of all of our residents, whether they're sheltered or unsheltered, and keeping everybody in our community safe. And there needs to be, there needs to be more conversations out there in the community of where people can go to get additional services for mental health and the services that they may need. I know that we've, I hear from people in Ward Two who feel very unsafe, seeing people that are, that have mental issues, whether they're sheltered or unsheltered. I mean, it, it does pose a risk. I would just ask, I, I know that property owner is here and he's got some video, and I'm going to stay after the meeting because I want to see it. I want to see for myself what, what this impact is on all of our residents. So I know that we can't introduce it during a workshop, but I would just encourage, if anybody wants to see it, I think he'll show it to us.
Josh.
Yeah, well, I, I have questions about, about the ordinance. I also, I think at our last meeting where there was a reading, I, I had asked if we could have a work session on the needs assessment, that, and I wanted to know the status of that, and if that is something that we're going to, we're going to get a workshop, work session for the entire council on the needs assessment that Homeward has done. I think it's important, if we're actually serious about having a conversation about trying to get folks housed, to understand what, what the barriers are within our homeless system, and what, what resources are needed, and, and how we actually, I mean, we heard today about a map, you know, significant wait lists on a whole variety of programs. We should be thinking about tackling that. I know that's a long-term issue, but, but that's, I think, an important part of this, and I was hopeful, since we've had a month, that we would have, have already had that work session before we pass these items, but. The other thing I, I was wanting to know about relates to the ordinance and enforcement. And I, I'd asked previously, how is this going to be enforced? And particularly, I mean, there are a lot of questions, but questions about if folks move, and then you see some of the same folks eight hours later, or two days later, in a slightly different place, or if they come back to the same place two hours later, they certainly would have complied, and now they're out of compliance again. How are we enforcing? And then there's what, what I think is a contradiction in the ordinance, although my understanding is this is a criminal infraction, not civil, and that if there is non-compliance, people can be removed via arrest, which is effectively imprisonment. But, but that is, that is the, that is still the intent, and that's my reading of this, and I just wanted to get if that piece is correct, people can be arrested.
Due to non-compliance.
Due to non-compliance.
Yes.
People can be arrested, and this is criminal, not civil. Is that correct?
Correct.
Criminal, not civil. And then what are we doing in terms of enforcement over other periods of time?
Right, and so I, obviously, the focus is on compliance. And so again, the, all of that is only if we're not.
What, what ordinance do we pass that we don't want compliance with?
Right, but in, in a lot of other cases, which is not this one, we go right into a situation and we find that is not what this is about. This is about making sure our first initial conversations are with a provider, experts, and then if they're not able to assist and get to a compliance situation, that's where, where our police would have to step in at that point.
Right, but my, my question isn't, I mean, the, these are complicated situations, and for example, you know, we just cleaned up an encampment on Southwest Nine. There, there've been folks who complained about it. We posted notice, we cleaned it, and the people who were complaining weren't any happier because two days later, we followed our process and folks were back, right? So what, what I'm trying to understand is if someone complies, right? They're, they're in a, right away, they're somewhere they're not supposed to be, they comply, they've now complied, eight hours later, they're viol, it's a new, separate violation. How do we handle that?
We will handle that as a, as a first-time initial from our standpoint. But that's exactly why we need the outreach workers, because they're establishing relationships. So from, from an enforcement standpoint, it's still a first, first encounter. But for our outreach, it's an ongoing conversation.
Right, that, that's what I was, that was, that's what I was trying to understand. If at some point, we're going to go.
There's no escalation.
Straight to arrest for violations. I mean, if they've moved from point A to point B.
If they continue to comply, then then.
Right, but it, but, so each individual, like, so they can comply and then violate again, and it's like starting the process over?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, just a quick question on Skywalks. So is sleeping on sidewalks, streets, alleys, or doorways, is the Skywalk treated any differently?
Yes, because the, the challenge we have with Skywalks is that some of it is publicly owned and some of it is privately owned. And so the public aspects are only the areas that are over the streets.
Over the streets.
So it will not be allowable to be sleeping in the Skywalk.
And would, so, so right now, we have a, a dedicated police officer, Steve Walters, would, would, removing a person who's sleeping or set up housekeeping in the Skywalk, would, would there be an outreach office, an outreach person assisting in any Skywalk issues?
So I'll, I'll look to Shelby. I, I think we can actually treat that similarly, that we could contact and ask outreach to, to address that. But again, we would need compliance.
Right, but it's squishy between the public and the?
Correct.
Private parts of.
Because the private owners, as is the case anywhere, have the chance to go towards a trespassing concern, and so there's, there's other laws that, that they, they could utilize.
Scott, I'll just say thanks to you and your staff, thanks to the mayor, thanks to Councilmember Coleman, that's worked tirelessly on this, on the council, and, and all of us that have, we want to get this right. We, we believe that we can do better as a city, and we're going to do better. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect, but we have to do better. It's only getting worse if we don't do something different. And so I appreciate the efforts from everybody, and this was very informative. I'm looking forward to Monday, and let's, let's try to tackle this the best way with the most dignity that we have for the people that are sleeping on the streets, to get them the help that they need, and let, let's just move forward for our city, for our city's sake, and for the folks that are actually on the street.
The score session is over, and we will.
Good job, Mayor.